I got it.
Can you hear me now? Carolyn, you can't hear me, can you?
I'd like to call the April sixth, twenty twenty-three Wall City Council meeting to orders. And we have started the recorder. And would you please call a roll call, Carolyn?
Welsh?
Here.
Morgan?
Here.
Stan Anderson?
Here.
Can't hear you.
I'm here.
Okay. He gave a thumbs up. Houston?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Hawk? Mike Anderson?
Here.
We do have a form.
Thanks, thank you. And let's stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance. Here, if you please read that.
I will. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the great cause which stands for our nation.
Okay, do we have an order of business for emergencies tonight, Carolyn?
We do not.
And do we have attendance on Zoom?
Yes, Stan is on attending Zoom.
Okay. With that, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve.
Rick has moved.
Second.
Should I second it? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, same side? Okay. Um, tonight, we have, uh, we're ready for the police reports, so Deputy Perdell. And would you like to introduce who you have with you today?
Yeah. I got Deputy Bowman here with me. He was here about a year ago. And he's back now because he missed us all so desperately, so. Just formally reintroducing Deputy Bowman. Harkins would love to be with us, but he spent the last week out here and had some other things he had to get done today, so I'm stepping in his place. We had one arrest this, well, last month. It was a reckless burning arrest. We had Deputy, or Sergeant Harkins and then Deputy Christopherson staying Monday night and Tuesday night of this week because of those storms, which was very helpful for me, so. Prom night, we are gonna have some extra people on board, so you'll probably see some more of us that night. Deputy Christopherson is gonna work on getting some walk-in hours put together. Basically, certain hours every week that he will be over at the office unless a call comes out or something like that. He's gonna get with, um, right Carolyn, maybe next week or something like that, and get her the hours so she can put it on Facebook. He was gone this week, so we don't know the exact hours or anything like that on, about that, so. Sergeant Harkins asked me to chat about, um, our, like, call-out protocol. Stepping from a recent incident, basically what happens is if, uh, all deputies who are in the wall area are not working um, at the time and a call comes in here, depending on the urgency of the call, we can be called out. Call comes into dispatch, dispatch then, um, will notify a sergeant, a rapid sergeant most of the time.
Celebrate.
How do you know that sergeant can determine whether they're gonna call us out or not? Dispatch themselves are not allowed to call us out directly. Um, so it's a, a Rapid City Supervisor who has to have that decision. The incident in play that we were talking about, a call came in at four fifty-six in the morning. A Rapid City Sergeant called a deputy at five o'clock, so four minutes later. Twenty minutes after that call from the sergeant to the deputy, um, the officer ran up on scene. So, again, the, the deputy was sleeping when he received the call, so he had to wake up, get dressed, understand what's going on, and arrive twenty minutes later, so. That's kinda how that goes. Sometimes there is just more communication and things fall through the cracks, but that's kinda protocol on that, so. Think that's all I have for my notes. Is there any questions?
So just to clarify, this, if, if there's an incident and you call dispatch, they, the, a sergeant in Rapid City will make the decision. And then if it is urgent, that sergeant will, um, give the direction to have a person, a, a deputy that lives in or near Wal. Give them a call so they can arrive at the scene quite, uh, faster than someone coming from Rapid.
Correct.
Okay? Okay. So that sounds like that should move that, uh, sense of urgency up and response. Move, improve that by a lot of ways.
Correct, yeah. You mean like compared to Rapid?
Right, rather than waiting for someone to get, a deputy to get here from Rapid, because it does take a bit of time.
Yeah.
To drive down here.
Yeah.
And then if I understood correctly, uh, you said Deputy Christopherson is thinking about doing, uh, like, walk-in hours, which means he'll be at the office a specified time if it works without calls. And people can actually go there and visit with him if they have concerns.
Correct, yeah.
And that information will be broadcast then through our Facebook page or our, on our website. Is that true?
Yep.
Awesome. Does anyone else have any questions or thoughts or comments?
What was the story of the guy with the fire on the shed?
You know, I'm not sure. Uh, it was my weekend and, uh, by the time I got back, I don't know if I even looked into it because it was handled and there was no follow-up to it. So, yeah, I don't have a good answer for you there, sorry.
All right, well, thank you. And welcome back, too, by the way. Good to have you. Okay, does anyone have any conflict of interest they would like to indicate at this point with anything on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, I would, um, request approval of for the consent agenda, which is the minutes of both council meeting and equalization, the minutes of the, uh, fire department, the city of Wal, fire department, library and cemetery claims, as well as a budget report. Also, the on-call schedules, an ambulance report, water usage, sales tax report, and then a, a building permit that was, that has been reviewed and approved. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Okay, Mike has moved.
Second.
Ricky has seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Closed. Okay, and Stan, is that a thumbs up from you?
Okay. He's asking if I can get him on the speaker phone, so I'm going to try and call him to get him on the speaker to hear.
Is that a little important?
He can't, I don't know what's happening.
He can't seem to get it.
Can you hear?
He can hear, but he can't hear me. Can you hear us now then, Stan?
Yep, yes, yeah.
Okay.
Do you wanna just send it here?
I can hear you. You can't hear me, now you can hear me.
Okay, sounds good.
Now I have to dial in.
Yeah.
Then it takes some time.
Yeah, she's trying to avoid that. Okay, moving right along. Hey, LJ is not here, but they do have a closeout on the street project. Would you like to visit about that, Carolyn?
So it is included in your packet. I'm not sure if I include myself one. But this is just to complete the street project with Simons and that we, um, did retain some money back from them for not, um, completing everything, so, um, they paid us fifteen thousand nine hundred and eighty-four dollars and three cents for the landscaping part of it that did not get done, and so we will be able to hire someone to do that for us to finish that up, and they have reached out to a company named Three Suns. And they do have us in their lineup for spring when the weather gets better to come out and assess the project and see what they can do for us, so. That's how we're gonna finish that up, so this is just kind of a, if you approve this, then Mary will sign off on it and this will be done with that.
So was that the only issue that didn't get resolved here? Yeah, they deducted a bunch of money from some of the work that wasn't very good, so that's included in the fifty. Well, they just deducted that off total.
So we just never paid that, paid it. Paid that out.
Sixty thousand or fifty thousand.
Right.
And we do have a one-year warranty, too, according to this closeout. Excuse me, Carolyn.
Yeah, on the landscaping, how many is it? People's yards?
And you'll be handling that or working with the, the company that they've got hired, correct?
Yep.
Okay. So with that being said, do I have a motion to approve the final review and acceptance from, on the Simons contractors?
And make that motion.
It's been moved. Do I have, Mike has seconded. Any further discussion or questions or comments? Seeing none? Oh. Seeing none? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Okay. So that brings us to item eleven, and I understand that Preston is.
He called in about three thirty today and I'd already printed the agendas, so, um, he's not feeling very well. He didn't sound very good, so I think we are gonna excuse him from attending and he will be put on the twenty-third.
Okay, all right, so we'll deal with all of that then in the next meeting. So then that brings us to the agenda request, Ali.
All right, I've come up here on a number of occasions and asked the city council for transparency. The last time I did so, I was basically accused of lacking transparency on my behalf. Tonight, I'm here for the purpose of responding to that accusation. Small-town politics, I just assumed that everybody knew who I was. I apologize. Let me introduce myself into the community. My name is Lisa Rusat. I live in Creighton with my wife of seventy, twenty-seven years, seventy years, twenty-seven years. Mandy. Together, we own commercial property in Wal. I'm self-employed. My wife works in the city of Wal. Although we may not have a home in the city limits, we consider ourselves to be a part of this community. We strive to support the community in a number of ways. We spend our money on local businesses, whether that be the food center, the gas stations in town, the repair shops, local restaurants. We even spend money on Wal Drug. Part of my out-of-town property taxes, as well as my property taxes in Wal, support the Wal School District. We buy raffle tickets, cookie dough, Girl Scout cookies, popcorn. We support the rodeo club. We, we attend, uh, community events like the Wal Celebration, fireworks, the rodeo annual dinner. We have a number of valued relationships with members of the community. I may not technically be a citizen of Wal, but I'm not sure what else I can do to be considered a member of this community. Though certain members of this council may find that I lack the qualifications or right to speak at these meetings because I am not technically a citizen of Wal, they fundamentally misunderstand this forum. This forum is open to citizens and non-citizens alike. Any person with a voice and puts in a request to be on the agenda has the right to speak here. I've had the privilege to stand up here and speak at eight meetings. And despite of the focus of recent meetings, my interests and concerns have not all been focused on the Love's litigation. I've also spoken about Hillcrest, conflicts of interest, transparencies, attorney bills. Manny and I have no intention of moving, so I look forward to seeing you all again as I continue to voice my opinions at these meetings. I can only hope that the council finds the courage to be transparent as they are confronted with challenging questions from the public. One such challenging question that I, I, I think deserves a little clarification is the city budget from twenty twenty-two. When we left the meeting last time, it was stated that we had a one-point-two million dollar overage basically in our budget. Something I, I consider to be a little misleading myself when you look at the fact that we had allocated two-point-three million dollars to the Echo Valley project, which of that, we spent four-hundred thousand dollars. Had we actually spent the two-point-three billion dollars that was allocated for Echo Valley, we would not have had a surplus of money at the end of twenty twenty-two. That doesn't even take into consideration the airport projects, the, the projects on Fourth Avenue. So when we're talking about overages, when we've allocated money and that money, correct me if I'm wrong, is gonna be moved into twenty twenty-three into these projects. It's not, we didn't truly end up with the one-point-two million dollar surplus at the end of twenty twenty-two because that money had already been allocated to other projects. So when we talk about our financial status as a community, we should probably talk about the whole picture and like just bits and pieces of it. That's all I got?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Okay, we have another agenda request, and that's from Mary Moody. Welcome, Jerry.
Yes. I'm pretty sure everybody here knows who I am. I'm a friendly fix guy, so, you know. I've lived here since ninety-four. I do own property. I'm a resident of the city of Wal for, until I retired, I won the two, so anyway. My question for the city council is, I'm a little confused. The city is in contempt of court, right?
Yes.
That is, that is the court order, right? And why is the city of Wal in contempt? The city of Wal is in contempt of court because the judge, the court, which is the judge, has no housing chief. Let me read it. That way I don't have to remember it. It's what it is. And this is all information, it's all built knowledge. I'm not gonna say anything that you can't go to clerk courts or the city office and find. Anybody can do it. And in the court's findings, it says that the court, based on the city council's previous act, previous actions and testimony in this matter, the court is not confident that the city council will abide by further orders of the court to properly evaluate and apply the appropriate standards to the review of the Love's application. Does that sound about right? Okay, so we know where that went. The last question I got is, what is the end game? We've already spent a bunch of money fighting this, which we are now taking it to the Supreme Court. What, when this all gets done, after we spend all this money, I know what happens if we lose. If we lose, the court has said you have to issue a building permit. That's not a question. That is the law. Now, what is the end game if by chance we happen to win? Because I'm pretty sure that Love's is not going to not reapply. So does that mean that we just basically start all over again? That's my question is, where are we going in here? What is the, with us doing this, going to the Supreme Court? And I realize that the, the appeal is for the conflict, or for the, uh, not for the conflict of interest, but for the, uh, we're being found in contempt. That's what they're going to the Supreme Court for. But by that token is if the Supreme Court strikes that down, that does away with the building permit for Love, right?
It could.
Because that's what they're content. The only way that you get out of contempt of court, this contempt of court, is you either went to Supreme Court or you issue Love's a building permit. That's the only way that the city and the city council gets out of contempt of court. That's it. There isn't any other, any other thing you can do. And right now, like I said, that's what I was asking is, where do we go after this? Is it by, you know, we've spent a bunch of money fighting this to see that we're not in contempt of court? What happens after that? The biggest concern to me as a businessman in Wal is we've spent a bunch of money on housing, on an industrial park, trying to get people to come to town. We have a multimillion-dollar entity that wants to move to Wal, wants to move. Now, I got it, the whole deal about people living out there and, you know, having a truck stop in their backyard. Well, it's not really in their backyard. If you look at the range from where the truck stop's gonna be to where their houses are, there's a whole lot more houses closer to the, I, I don't know if I'd call it a truck stop, but it's a truck parking area up by the auto level. The closest, the furthest house away from there is two hundred yards. That's the furthest house away from where they park there. So I mean, is that what we're gonna do? Is we're just gonna, yeah, we decide that we just don't want it? Because the way I read the court order, there's no legal reason to not give Love's a building permit. There's no legal standing for them, for the city not to issue a building permit. That was a question I had for the council.
Jerry, it's a, a good question and certainly something we thought about. This is in process. Our attorneys are working on it. We don't know how it's, uh, gonna come out, so it's, it's, uh, hard to play that far down the road. I, I mean, we decided and voted to take this to the Supreme Court and we're doing that. After that, I, I mean, our, our city attorney, Stephanie Trask, is here at the second meeting. Uh, she would be much better, in a much better position to, to respond to some of these things.
Well, this is where I'm going with this. We've spent hundred and something thousand dollars in fighting this. And you can't tell me that we haven't sat down already, figured out what we're gonna do at the end of this? I mean, that would be like spending a whole bunch of money on a business that you don't know how to run. I mean, you're, we've already spent all this money to fight it. There's no end game. There's no, at the end of this, we're going to do what? We're just gonna wait till the lawyer decides that we need to do something else?
No, I mean, this is going before the South Dakota Supreme Court, I, I mean.
Now, I'm not talking about the P.O. I'm talking about the end game when this is all done, one way or the other, because we know how it ends if we, if we lose. We lose, that's, it's a done deal. You gotta, you have, the city has to issue a building permit according to the law. Now, if you win, if we win, that means that basically the contract, or the, uh, court order says that we're not in contempt of court no more. And when she wrote this, that was her saying that because of this, there's no reason for you not to issue a building permit. So if you win, then basically you're not in contempt of court, then you can go ahead and deny the building permit for Love's, then what? That's, that was the question, because, like I said, we, we should have something going down the road as far as when we get there. Because like I stated before, I'm a hundred percent sure that Love's is not gonna reapply. I mean, I would just, I don't bet, and I would just about bet you steak dinner that they're gonna reapply if they lose. And then we start all over again with the, you know, the hundred thousand dollars that we've spent so far, again, because it'll go to court, apparently. So I mean, that was, that was my concern, is I just don't see where, at the end of this, what's gonna happen. I know what happens on one side. The other side, I don't. Does that mean that the next time somebody comes in, that, well, we were talking about the deal with the, uh, marijuana shop? You notice they were actually paying a lot of attention to what was going on with the building permit as far as Love's goes. Because they're not gonna spend a whole bunch of money until they figure out what's going on with this, I'm pretty sure. And that, that just carries on to every business that wants to come to town. I mean, you look at how the, see, because what it is, I think, buying a business in town that's already running is a different deal than coming in and starting, starting fresh. Whether you come in from, when I moved here, I lived in Belfast. I wasn't born and raised around here. You know, I was an outsider. I've been here for quite a while. That's how you get to be part of the community, is you make that commitment to come to town and do it, and that's what we have, that's what we're trying, that is that what we're trying to look for? Is somebody to come in and make that commitment to come to our town and help us out, because that's basically what they'd be doing.
So you're asking if, af- after the Supreme Court, first of all, they have to decide if they're gonna hear it.
You're right.
And then if it actually goes, and this is a twelve or fourteen-month, uh, process to take it to Supreme Court and then they take rules of time to discuss it. So we're, we're about fourteen months away. So what the, the question? Before you'll hear anything back from the Supreme Court.
I thought they were gonna hear seven or eight.
Well, that was if they decide to hear it at USD and that has not been determined yet.
Okay, I know that.
Number one, and even if it is, the Supreme Court does not just like boom, come back with an answer. They just hear. And so from the people I've spoken to said this is a twelve-to-fourteen-month process down the road, but his question is then, whether win or lose, are we done or are we going to continue to resist having this business come to town? Or other businesses like? Is anybody on the council have a?
I agree with them. I, I personally feel, win or lose, we're backing court with Love's. They're gonna find another way. If they don't find us in contempt, they're gonna try to find another way to take us back, and I personally feel like they have, they know they have more money than this small town does, and I think they're just gonna keep hammering us, is my opinion.
Well, is there anything the council can do to avoid staying in a lawsuit with them?
No answer to that, because I don't see, on the far as the contempt, I would almost think that then that they would make a final decision at, at that time, but I don't know what I witnessed in the court process. Pretty surprising, because I've got to tell you, I voted for Love's. That judge was, there was, there was reasons that this whole council, even myself, questioned what was going on, because she flip-flopped around. She, it was kinda weird how she handled the whole thing.
Well, the, the one thing I do know is that the, the judge, and I, and I'm not a lawyer, don't even wanna be. But I do know that as far as the judge is concerned, it is the law. She's only concerned about what she's shown and what she decides after that. Now, you can sentence, say, yeah, maybe down the road they'll change the law, or we'll redistrict, or we'll do whatever. It doesn't matter, because right now the law states that the city is in contempt, and until you either give them a building permit or you went at the, you know, went at the Supreme Court, this is the law. I'll give you a little anecdote. Hundred years ago, before South Dakota had motorcycle helmet law, I had a motorcycle, and my birthday's on the fifteenth of June. New laws went into effect the first of July. Okay? I was celebrating my birthday. Somewhere along the line, I got separated from my motorcycle. I was on one side of town. It's midnight. I'm trying to get to the other side of town. I'm trying to get to the other side of town. I get stopped. Long story short, the cop can't give me for anything but not having motorcycle. Okay? The law had already been passed. Was going into effect the first of July. This is like. Within two weeks. By the time I got to go to the magistrate, it was probably within a week. I went to the magistrate and she says, well, you know, you have information, and I said, well, yeah. In a week, the law changes. To where South Dakota, you don't have to have motorcycle helmet. And she looked at me and she said. That is in a week. This law is in effect right now. And that's how, that's just exactly it. Doesn't matter if you're two minutes before it goes into effect, it's still law. And until this gets changed, this is the law.
Um, Jerry, the. She found us in contempt for not following her.
Yeah, I don't know, yeah, you don't wanna go down that path.
Well, that's, no, that's what it is, isn't it? That's why she found us in contempt that we didn't.
Yeah, like I said.
Her first.
Yeah, I, I, I read it. I know, I know why she, I know why she did it. And personally. This is all I'm gonna say about the whole thing. If I was on the city council. Somebody came and had a building permit for a garage and a park store. I would say I'm out. That's all I'm gonna say. Now, you can go, you, you know, the contempt of court thing, I've spent a lot of time looking at it. And. Conflict of interest is even worse, because conflict of interest, if you don't, no, I'm not even going, not even gonna go there. I'm not gonna do it, because it's just, it, it's just beating a dead horse. It's really is. That's all I can say. Is that, you're exactly right. She's quoted that six times in her findings, that. She had brought it to the intention of the city council that you needed to take care of this. She had actually asked that in the deposition that were given in court about conflict of interest. Yeah, so from there, yeah, you're just gonna have to deal with it from there. I don't know.
I said conflict of interest.
Yeah, but, but.
I'm sorry.
She found it contempt of court because of conflict of interest. She kept stating that you needed to look at it, and. In her opinion, you did, and that's why she, that's why she found it in contempt.
But we did. I mean, we, we did it.
That's, that is personal. That's what everybody says. All I said was, if somebody was building a park store and garage, and I was on the city council. I would say, uh. From there, like I said, that's. That's all you're saying. Now. I had, no, I'm not gonna say anymore, just for the fact that, yeah. It, it started getting into. Starts getting stuck that I'm not a lawyer, I don't pretend to be a lawyer. I have read enough about this to know that it seems like. Seems like it's a pretty deep hole. That's all I can say. But other than that, that's what I came about, so, anyway.
Thank you, Jerry.
You bet.
Okay, that brings us to public comment, and this is a time for members of the public. To discuss or express concerns to the council. You have a three minute limit. Today, uh, Mike is going to be timing us, and so if there's anyone that would like to visit. About uh something. That um, an issue, they are welcome to come to the podium and. And talk to us for three minutes.
Good evening. I'm Frank Rich. We bought a house up here next to Dairy Queen, just in case you didn't know. And. The wife's been. Working today to get some few minutes of time on drainage problem. I talked to Garrett about it last spring. What they did is, is uh, after we bought the house, when they put that new gravel in for that block to the west of it. To make that nice parking lot. That raised up the ground there. And that raised up the ground, that excluded the natural. Drainage. That made the alley real soft, so we couldn't get the propane truck in and out, and I couldn't get in and out with my pickup and all the stuff. And I'd ask Garrett if we could put some rock in there or something, so we could get the trucks in and out, and we did that. Wonder who did that, but. Just blocked a little bit more drainage. And then. Anytime that they pushed the snow over and, and blocked into the alley. That blocks the drainage coming down the street, which pushes the water back up into the earth. So we need to see about if we can get something worked out. Later on, when your business slows down, you get a couple hours to sleep. See if we can work something in there, or we can make something rain, because it used to drains in the north and to the west. And even a little bit to the south.
Yeah, I was looking at it today, and I think.
We got, you know, we got buried electric cables in there, we got water, and we got a sewer drain out there.
I think maybe we could make it run to the north, to the west again. I think we just gotta clean it out.
But we won't be able to make it run west unless we put a parking lot out.
Frank, can I ask a question? Who owned this house before you? Thank you. Thank you.
So what I hear you say, Garrett, is you think that you have got an idea on how to do some. Not deep, but some trenching that will take the water. That side. A little bit to the north and then to the west, and there's a natural drainage once you get to that point.
Yep, and it'll be, and it kinda went through, Rick, your property down there. Um, to the south of the Forest Service building there, so.
Yeah.
Maybe I'll get with you two and see if you're all right.
Plow snow into that alley, because we ought to be able to get the propane truck in and out, or at minimum.
Okay.
You may need it for fire truck access or something later on, too.
Hey, Garrett, I'll, I'll work with you on that on our property there. Okay, let's close by.
Okay, sounds great. Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else that wanted to make any public comment tonight? Okay. Oh, Jim, okay.
Yeah, I just come to ask, um, I just got a bid from Todd Seeler to just fill in that hole. Over here on Main Street and then gravel the whole thing, and it was fifty-six thousand dollars. To do that, and I just was curious, it's twenty-two thousand is. What he had written down for dirt, and I was just seeing if the city could maybe find me some dirt closer. He said he had to haul it from his house. That was out in the country, twenty-two miles. So if I could sure find some dirt closer, I could take that cost down extensively, and so there's not a big hole on Main Street still. And maybe actually do something with it this summer still. I'd sure appreciate any help if we could find locating some dirt. And make the job a lot faster and cost effective. I kinda mentioned it to Mary a little bit, but I wanted to bring it up to the rest of the council. And that would put the total job then for the clearance in about a hundred and eight thousand if we, if I use that bit. For the tearing down of the building and then the, uh, you know, just to gravel it is only about seven thousand. So just to fill in the hole, though, we're talking, there's about an extra thirty thousand, so it'd have been, you know. I'm just letting you know the costs of what I'm looking at facing, just to get the hole filled in and get it gravelled, so it's safe again. And from then on, and after that gets done, then I could move on forward with some other step, you know, I talked. Briefly with city and Mary and, you know, a few of you guys about maybe just putting up a temporary tent. And the things that I need to do that, well, the first step is I gotta get the hole and I get it gravelled first, and. You know, I didn't, I don't feel like twenty-two thousand to get dirt home was appropriate. Uh, for that, and I just, you know, since the city's trying to help me with that, maybe you could help me find some dirt that's a little closer than twenty-two miles. Okay?
Okay, alright.
Uh, one other thing, too. Uh, I have been talking to the tribe. Uh, maybe of a potential partnership on a casino. On that property, and I didn't know, I just wanna mention it now. And see what the legalities of it are. I've got lawyers looking into it on that. But I just thought I'd mention it now, you guys can start talking amongst yourselves, and, you know, if that's a. Liable, or, you know, something that maybe we could do in the future, I think it would be. A big boon for this town in the wintertime, as far, and, as well as summer. But, I mean, I think in the wintertime, I think it would put us on the map being here on the interstate. I think it would help the motels greatly and all the rest of the business that suffer throughout the winter. And, uh, it's just something that I've. You know, uh. I think would be something I would like to put on that property. That I think would be beneficial for not just me. And not just, you know, working with the tribe too to help some tribal member, just the whole town. I think it would increase our business in this town a lot, especially in the winter. It would change people's destination spot, we'd have more business, maybe meetings, lure the kind of people into town that have some money. To spend on all the stores and the motels. And that's what we wanna do is build business. So, it's just an idea I have, if that, then we have other plans, you know, secondary plans going into effect, but. That would be my first choice, if we could do that, I just, I think that would, I mean, be incredible. Uh, I mean, I don't even know what the numbers would be, but, just something I'd like to mention. That, you know, I'm trying to work on, I've been working just in the initial steps. But they seem to be open to listening and opening for funding to help build it. That, you know, as long as it gets approved, they, their biggest concern was the council, it seems like, to me. So, just something I'd like to mention.
Understand that. Jimmy, I. And I don't know this, I thought they. Could they only build on?
Trust.
Try, try land?
Yeah. Well, we, I'd have to put the land into trust. Which is okay, because I'm a member of the tribe.
Okay.
So that part of it.
Okay, okay, I, I didn't realize this. So if you're gonna build a permanent structure, do you actually want to fill that? That hole in, because wouldn't you have to, to dig it out, excavate it, to put a foundation?
Yeah, this, this would be just for the, this summer, basically a temporary deal and then, you know. Work, work from there, because we're not gonna get, you know, obviously, we're not gonna have answers for these questions right away. I was just. Still trying to piece something together for a few months this summer, if possible. If not possible, then, you know, just keep moving forward on other stuff.
Right.
You know what I'm saying?
Okay, alright, thank you, Jim. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to? Uh, make some comments? Mark?
I'm Mark Brooklocker, I think most of you know me. And I apologize for not paying attention to what has been going on with Fourth Avenue. How are we sitting on that issue of road repair?
Uh, that hit, that is a project that will go to bid this fall. So September or October. And then with the, when we approve that bid, then construction will start. Uh, first of next year.
Okay, you're good, you're good. Reason I was wondering is, I do have three rental houses right along Fourth Avenue. And of course. All that truck traffic comes in for the elevator, uses that road, it's very tough on it.
Exactly.
Yeah, I know it, because they come by our house out there in the country too. And so I'm very well aware of it. Uh, my other issue then was, uh. On the airport road. And I might add too, that Garrett Ryan has far exceeded my expectations in being the head of. The Public Works Department, and his workers, they're doing an excellent job. Garrett is, uh. Very easy to get along with, and he's very comely. And we've kinda worked out a little issue of. The air, airport road. Joins up, leaves the asphalt by the airport and then joins up to the township, Hundred Ninetieth Avenue Road. Uh. That was. Getting pretty bad. Anytime you tried to put. Gravel over asphalt, there's nothing for it to stick to. And this was done before Garrett got on Public Works, I might add. And, uh, then there was, at that time too, after that, they added ground up asphalt. And that even made it worse, before Garrett was under too, I might add, and. Uh, it started being really, really washboard. Trucks couldn't even pack. And so Garrett and I, I worked with him a little bit, come up with a, we thought was a real grand idea, and I still think it is. We, Eric got dirt on there. Plans were to gravel it. And of course, before we could get to it, Mother Nature changed our plans drastically. We had an early winter, very bad one. And a long one, I might add. Isn't that right, Garrett? And that's right, you know it very well. Uh, but I guess my main concern is that we do have monies set aside to purchase gravel. So like Garrett has something to work. To my main concern.
How much are you talking, Mark? I don't know, I have to figure now. Is it just right at the scene there, or is it go back a little ways? But the, just to the entrance to like the ball fields, the farthest north entrance to the ball field, so just be from the airport. Over there.
So you do have a game plan, right?
Yep, I'm gonna get it, figure out how much we need, and then park the pulsing out there and see if we can get some. Gravel from there, gravel pit out there. I don't exactly know.
How to get anywhere, or where to get the gravel from.
Yep.
There are no derrings down there. I think his skid loader, or his loader is broke down. It's a bad thing.
Yeah, so no, hopefully I didn't. Blow all the dirt off the road and all the stove and all that snow, but no, it's. It's stuck under, actually, you know, it's pretty friggin' service, so yeah, no, the plan is to put gravel on.
And one thing for sure, that is not the only muddy road. In our part of the country right now, and that's good news that we have actually got moisture. This year.
It is, it is.
Thank you, Mark, thank you.
Well, I think that's. Thank you ever so much.
Absolutely. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to give, um, public comment? Okay, seeing none. Uh, we will move on to item fifteen. On a conditional use permit. So, yeah, tissue. Would you like to tell us about that?
Um, yeah, I can, um, I suppose. I'm Tisha Shear, I've lived in Lockwood twelve years, and I'm Jason White. So you can do it, don't know. Which one of the Shears I'm married to, I get that all the time. Um, so I utilize my house in the winter for my family, because we live out of town, um, but through the summer months, we never use it. Um, so I would like to do a vacation home. There, um, and I have a copy of everything that I need from the city, um, to give to you guys, and I have it all right here with me. The only thing that I was unsure of, um, was the question four. On the short term Airbnb rental, um, would you like me to read it to you? It says, um, you would need a copy of any required South Dakota license to operate such a business. And I wasn't sure what you guys wanted from me on that one, so I didn't get that. Um, I got everything else. Um, I got the signatures, I got the sales tax license, um, I got the Department of Health to come down. And I have the insurance, so. I didn't, I needed a little clarification on that one.
So, and I wasn't sure during this whole process, and. Kind of wanted to word it so that I wasn't specific to a certain business and then didn't include everything. That's why I had it the way it is, but, um, I had with Airbnbs or vacation homes. Like motels, you're supposed to get a, um, lodging permit from the Department of Health.
Okay. So she didn't say anything about that when she came down, um, because she said there was a vacation home. She didn't read it the same as she went to motel, so.
Yeah, but I, I've reached out to, um, Julie Ramsey with the Department of Health. And I actually did share an email with these guys, um, in their packets, because. I wasn't sure either, I didn't know who, if it was the Department of Revenue or the Department of Health, that you had to get what from, so I emailed. Both of them to me. Answer my question, and that's what Julie Ramsey said.
Well, she came and she. And it does say Department of Health Lodging Establishment inspected, so, I mean, I'm guessing it would be for both.
And that could be, you know, like I said, this is kind of a. New thing that was implemented recently on that, so. Did, was it Julie Ramsey that came and did your inspection?
No, it wasn't, it was Charlotte Johnson.
Oh, okay. Um if you can maybe let me scan that or make a copy.
Yeah, you can make a copy of all of it.
Yeah, I'll see if that's. We just want, the council just wanted to make sure that, you know, we were following all the guidelines that the Department of Health and the. Department of Revenue were requiring for those things as well, so.
Okay.
Okay, so at this point, the. Documents that you have in your hand, we don't have, or Carolyn has not seen, is that true?
We hadn't gotten it.
So what I would suggest is that you, uh because we won't be able to approve this until we have. All these check marks, I guess. So would it be possible for you to work with Carolyn in the next day or two and? And get that information completed and we can bring that back to the next meeting and.
So I have to wait till the next meeting to get it done. I mean, I have it all right here with me. I mean.
But I don't know, I guess, you know, the how sending that to them.
Talking to you back and forth and and you didn't say anything about you have to give this to me before the meeting starts. You never told me. I'm new, I'm new to the. Right. City Council and stuff like I I didn't know that. You didn't say, Tish, you have to give this to me. You just said bring it. You have to come to the meeting and bring this with you.
No, that's why I sent the letter, though. You got, I let her what?
I got a letter for the salon. I didn't get a letter for Airbnb.
Okay, yeah, I'm sending them all out.
This one that you sent out? Or does she have that information?
No, she has that. I, oh, I forgot, this was a new request. I was thinking, because I'd sent out other letters to the other.
I got, I got the one from the salon and I sent it back to you the very day I got it.
Right.
Saying all the things that you asked.
Right, I was just getting mixed up on who had gotten what on the conditional use permits and stuff, so.
So our next meeting would be the twentieth, right? Um so would that be possible for you to?
Have April twentieth?
Yes.
Okay, so if I get it to you then and do I have?
You just bring it back to Carolyn.
But do I have to come to the meeting or just give it to you?
Well, we'd love to have you come, but if you don't like it, no.
I feel like I sit in a hot seat over here. I don't want any part of it. I I live in the country for a reason, right? Yeah, yeah.
No, that's not an issue, but.
I'll get that information to you then.
Yeah, so she can attach it to the permit and it should be funded.
I know, thank you.
Well, thank you, Tish.
I have a question for the council on the Airbnb bill, like um saying that you have to set up a business self-tax license. But like with how Airbnb handles it, all the taxes are paid through them and they pay you basically like a contractor, you get ten ninety-nine. But why would you have to set up a business license with the Department of Revenue if taxes are already paid? On everything to do, because that seems like you'd have to do a double tax on because you're reporting your stuff.
So Airbnb?
They take care of the taxes.
They care.
And they ten ninety-nine.
Okay.
I think that's what we didn't realize.
Well, and I I guess I would also want to make sure that they were collecting the BBB tax also because. I didn't know until I asked the question, but Airbnbs do need to pay the BBB tax if. We implement that, you know, some towns don't collect BBB tax, but we do, so.
And I'll I'll check into that with the Airbnb.
So does every vacation home go through Airbnb?
No, they're still.
No. So.
Yeah.
So yeah, that's how we've got to try to get everybody on the same page.
Yep.
And see who you're working with, so. So it sounds like we can do some more uh research on that then. So you let us know.
Okay, just even if, if you had a contact for me, I can call like the Airbnb company and. Ask the questions and stuff too to to understand it.
Yep, I'll do, I'll reach out to you there.
Okay, thank you. Alright, moving on to number sixteen then, fireworks building.
So the current fireworks uh business that was south of town um is not in contract with. The property owner out there, so they're looking to place a building someplace else. And they have talked to um Scott Eisenbrown on the corner down there and he invited to lease them. A spot. It's a ten by. Or um building that they would call it a uh construction office is kind of what it's gonna look like. I think like the Forest Service building down there. It would just be, um he's only gonna be utilizing it from. Like six weeks, eight weeks out of the year. And then he said, you know, if somebody else wanted to use it for something else, he was open to that, but I had Garrett. Check and see if it would fit in anywhere because he wanted to be facing South Boulevard. Which isn't practical with the nine one one and the coffee shop there. So the only thing about um being on the. Northwest side, that does put him on Main Street. And our ordinance does say that fireworks business cannot be located on the Main Street between Fourth Avenue. And South Boulevard. So didn't know if you're interested in granting a variance for that, or I did include a map. With you guys, I think I scanned it into. Um because there is another business that has recently made contact and. I visited with Scott and they want to come in down there too. Scott's idea was to put the barbecue place between the nine one one location and the quilt shop. And then the fireworks over there, as you can see on your map. But he said, you know, if you had to reverse it, you put fireworks in between there, you put the barbecue back there, you could. So he has not applied for like a building permit or anything yet because I wasn't sure if this was even gonna work out. I said, we need to have the discussion first. To see. Do you have any comments on the location?
I would measure it and where the parking lot begins is twenty-five feet from the back of the curb.
From the street?
From the street.
From the main street.
Yeah.
So it's twenty-five feet off Main Street, so it's not exactly on Main Street, but it's twenty-five feet. And there'd be enough room there to. For it between there and then, would there still be room for the barbecue pit?
I would say so, yeah. Yeah, and so, yeah, if they're talking to put it, move it over on the other side.
But it's only gonna be open six weeks a year.
A very short window. I I don't exactly, because I think you can't sell after July fourth.
Then we have another empty building up. Sorry, that's just my opinion. And it's not building. I guess you can call it a construction office, but it looks like the trailer domain or what.
Would it be there permanently? You don't know that, I know.
Well, Scott made the comment that these two businesses are interested in. Entering a three-year contract with them.
Jerry, do you have a question?
I did have a question. Just thinking, doesn't the county have some kind of ordinances as far as? Where, how close you can beat other buildings with fireworks stand with selling fireworks? All the rest of the ones I've seen. Have big sat offs from where the, because you've got hundreds of pounds, thousands of pounds of explosives. I'm just saying, I just, I'm just listening to this because you go like uh.
Grocery shop next to it.
You go to, you go to Outvale? They've got, you know, you, they've got a big saddle for those fireworks stands. I I mean, I was just a question. I just thought.
Good question.
Good question. You know, you want a thousand pounds of explosives.
Yeah, next to you guys.
I have a plan. I got protein. And I'll be up here constantly. I'll be your nightmare.
What are you saying, do you need your plants in the water or?
Nothing. It's already all gravel there, it's all.
But look what we had with the alley. Look at that alley, how I fought last year to get that damn alley cleaned up last year.
We gotta clean up too.
Yeah, we gotta done. And we need the people to keep it up. That's the thing. Pass them.
This would be, this this building is gonna be on the, so where the lot is, the quilting building is here. And so this this would be on the opposite side of the.
Yeah, but all you takes is one stupid little kid, come down there, fire it off. My propane paint, paint the back there. I have a camera back.
They're not supposed to shoot. They're not supposed to shoot fireworks in the city, but.
Yeah, but you got to think kids that.
They do that now. They do that now, so.
So the question in front of us right now is whether we uh. Whether we approve uh let allowing that fireworks uh temporary office. Or building um on that particular lot at this point in time.
I think it is a problem with houses right there, business right there, I.
Yeah, I mean, I I I think the the council made that that rule was a pretty good rule. I I mean, in like Jerry said, thousands of pounds of explosives and. And you know, button up against a residential neighborhood. I mean, yeah, doesn't sound like a great idea to me. And and I I I'd like some fire department input too, just saying.
Would you have to have an ordinance, the city, saying that you cannot have a fire so. So many people in housing, that's what.
Yeah, I I mean, just inputting that there were lots of cabins out there right next to it.
But but the fireworks person owned the cabins?
Yeah, no.
He didn't?
No.
Oh, really? I thought he did. He did?
No, no, he was renting. The fi- this guy who wants to move back in there was renting from Joel. He was renting the bill, space in the building. He did.
Oh, I I'm way back.
Okay, so.
Now it's rented, they want to rent it for Joel to put fireworks.
They were renting it and then that didn't pan out, and so now they're wanting to go someplace else.
So do I have a motion to not allow or to get more information or?
I'd say get some more information. We should probably check with the inspectors and make sure that it meets all of that.
Insurance, senior insurance, yeah.
Okay, I'm just gonna add another business and this one's only six weeks a year. Come on, look at all the businesses we have in this community that aren't open full time. They have buildings that sit empty all the time. So I guess I'm gonna vote no one, six weeks a year having a building sit there.
Well, it's not even built in, apparently. It's gonna be a trailer.
I don't know why that just strikes me as odd, right? Six weeks and then.
And I might be stretching the six week. I just own that number out there, so don't hold me to it.
It's like a week before. And then now New Year's or the end of June or the.
And yeah, and the other thing I'm pressing is, all those little businesses are putting in over there, they've got no sanitation facilities. The trash I have to pick up all the time because they've got, not being putting dumpsters out there and keeping them picked up themselves. So I get it over my yard every time the wind blows. So we might oughta wanna address making sure that they start putting the trash dumpsters out there. I think in these building business, opposed to slytherium. On disposal.
Okay, so we can bring that to Scott's attention as he's moving forward this and I hear you saying that you want to. Table um item sixteen for right now and get more research. And that brings us then to the chamber report.
Okay, um so we are trying to get our um annual citywide cleanup schedule. And we'd like to schedule it for Saturday, May sixth, and have a rain date of um Saturday, May third, please. So um we would just like to request to have the rubble site open and. Also to see if the city is willing to pick up tires again this year like they have previously.
It's really fun when I follow rotting leaves and uh. It's the good smelling water. That's one good thing to do.
What was your rain date? Um rain date, uh May thirteenth, so it's the first Saturday and the second Saturday of May.
Jerry, do you have a question?
I just, we started talking about tires. I mean, I, I mean, seriously, there's a lot of tires in town. But there's nobody that comes by and picks up tires to clean the city. Maybe we oughta look and getting ahold of somebody that would come through for cleanup. Because I know how it works to clean up. I can't take my tire because I'm a commercial man. But I have tires and there's at least two or three in town. I know Mike's got them, I've got them, he's have got them. And they're just sitting around. They're a health hazard, basically.
Fire hazard too.
Well, health hazard more than a fire because, anyway, but anyway, long story short. That would really, I mean, it'd help me, it'd help Mike, it'd help these. Maybe even the, you know, there's tires sitting around for commercial enterprises that we can't get rid of. Really, we can't get rid of. I can't take them to the dump unless somebody comes and gets them. They're just laying on my lot. Reading mosquitoes. And I got a feeling this year we're gonna have mosquitoes, it's gonna be about that long. Jerry, when you do have to have somebody come pick them up, who do you? I, I haven't had, last time I had tires picked up, there was a guy that had got ahold of Dees. And he came down and uh picked them up there and I just happened to be there one time. And they said, oh, they want to pick up tires. It's like, you know, it's one guy picked them up there. But then that's been shit probably ten years ago. They come by all the time and pick up the. Well, if they do, yeah, like I said, then, yeah, if if anybody's got any information on that, let me know.
Okay.
Because that's where we pick our tires to these, we. They charge us, the city. I mean, there shouldn't be any tires we pick up at least a hundred and twenty every year. You never saw it by my place, Garrett. I don't want you over here.
Okay, so your question is, and Garrett, can the rubble site be open on the May sixth for the cleanup day?
As long as I'm not on call.
Okay.
I'm just kidding.
And is May sixth a great day for cleanup for the chamber? Is everyone, the council okay with that? Okay, and will you, if you're not on call, pick up the tires? For anybody that sets them on their curb? Is that what?
That's a good job for Tate, right?
Well, they, you, one of them usually helps me. I drive the pickup and they throw them in the back. So we just need a motion on that?
So.
Yeah, I need to make sure that we know the ti- what was the time? It's between like eight, ten? Seven, but I mean, the Tyler tire pickup area, and there wasn't any, if it's.
I I knew.
I think it's after like ten o'clock, we won't pick any up, so.
After ten, okay.
But then they just bring them to the shop and put them in front of the door, so.
Well, why don't tomorrow you come and talk to me about it and you can decide the time for the tire?
Okay.
If that would be okay.
Basically, we just need that for the add.
Yeah, I just need to put it together and so that's whatever you would like.
You should put in there because I witnessed the front door, his city building, one of his tires, it looked like.
Oh, yeah, there was a lot of garbage one time.
Apparently people just thought they could take it to the city and.
So would it also help um maybe just putting on their what they can't take out there? Because what, it's plastic? Yeah, we can just take wood and metal. Yeah, maybe just put that on. I think it's. Yeah, Gary's usually. Gary takes all the other stuff.
How about my brown refrigerator? It's not white.
No, we don't take those.
Okay. Do I have a consensus of the council then to approve May sixth for a cleanup day? And Garrett will work with Katie to get times.
It doesn't, doesn't clean up start in in front of the drugstore at seven o'clock and we launch for the, from there for two hours.
Yeah, and then come back for breakfast, I think, is what you're done.
Yeah, we do complimentary breakfast for all the uh the people that clean up. And then I think you have wristbands.
Okay.
So we know.
Yep, and they just leave it on the street and we go around and pick up.
And is that something that you're, is that something that you're okay with this year?
Yeah, done forever.
Okay, okay.
Love to.
Okay, alright.
Sounds great.
Anything else?
Yes, um I know, I I I've heard that previously Kelsey would bring um. Like our website clicks and in interest in our digital report. I'm just kind of starting to figure that out and honestly, I don't want to take your guys' time with it. If you are interested in it, let me know. I've got the reports, I can email you. If that's something that you want to take a look at, just let me know. Um and then. Um, and then the other thing is, our next chamber board meeting is April twelfth at seven AM, and then our annual meeting is April nineteenth at five thirty. And I, I think I did send you guys all invitations out, so we'd love to have you all there. And that is all I have for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Okay, do I see anyone here for Wall Economic Development?
Yeah, she can be on the podium.
Well, I'm done.
I just have a really short report, most of you already know that we had offered the position to Amy Madison, when he had declined, she had gotten a offer she couldn't reproduce from her current employer, so we are back to advertising again, I know it is on Facebook page for, for the chamber, the economic development, uh, Carolyn has put an ad in the city, and it is also on the Elevates website with advertising with their, with them. And I just had received one, uh, application just as I walked to the door here tonight, but, um, so far that's, we're just waiting to see who we have interested in the position.
You have an N D on that? Or just until, yes.
Yep.
Okay.
Right here.
Thank you, Dawn. Okay, so then, speaking of fireworks, um, explain to us about this though, Carolyn.
Um, so we have purchased fireworks in the past, and then the fire department sets them off along the Phillips Fire Department. I did not get a date from Jim when I reached out to him, um, but typically we have purchased nine thousand dollars worth of fireworks, and if we make the purchase tonight and submit it, they will give us five percent of additional product for early purchase.
It's bigger ones.
What's that?
I mean, it's bigger ones.
So I just, uh, needed approval if you guys were still interested in doing that.
Okay, it's feeling, council, do we want to do Fourth of July fireworks?
Not sure it's on the fourth, but.
No, but during that time of year.
Did you have it in the budget, plan for that?
Yes. So, yeah.
Okay.
Better, Garrett.
Do I have a motion to approve purchasing fireworks, nine thousand dollars plus five percent additional product?
That's a move.
Kelly moved?
Second.
Jerry seconded, any further comments, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries, okay. And then, uh, warning hate ground bids for the industrial park, Carolyn, did you receive some bids?
I did.
Bidders.
Um, some of them kind of combined them together, so I'm not really sure, I'm gonna have to open them all and then organize them, I guess. Had some new interests, so they weren't sure what the process was. Under the industrial park. Yeah. This is industrial, I've gotten industrial property.
Money. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
That's first to airport. What, yeah. Um, okay, so we received from Tracy Trask on the airport, one thousand two hundred and seventy-three dollars. Humphrey submitted eight hundred and seventy-six dollars. And Derek know, um, is submitting eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Canobel.
Canobel. K N O D E L. Canobel.
Yep.
So it looks like that would be Tracy Trask, who received highest on that.
What was Tracy's, sorry?
One thousand two hundred and seventy-two. On the airport industrial park, very. I have a bid of six thousand one hundred and fifty from the Canobel. Um, I have a bid from Marty Williams of ten thousand two hundred and five. Bid from Tracy Trask for nine thousand two hundred and seventy-two. And a bid from Don Richter for seven thousand nine hundred and twenty. So it appears that Marty Williams got the industrial part bid.
Who, who did?
Marty Williams.
And then for how much?
Ten thousand two hundred and five.
Who's the nine thousand one?
Nine thousand from Tracy Trask, nine thousand two hundred and seventy-two.
Okay. You, we need to accept those, or?
Yes, I would need a motion on the, um, I'll take the hate ground, the airport hate ground first, I guess.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept the, uh, Tracy Trask bid for one thousand two hundred and seventy-two dollars?
So no, second.
Any further comment? Or discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carry. Okay, do I have a motion for, to accept Marty Williams' bid for ten thousand two hundred and five? So, hey, Kelly's moved?
But.
Mike seconded, any further comments or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Mary, how many acres is the industrial park? You know?
Around a hundred and eighty-eight.
But this year, there's some, because of the lots out there and runway, there's, but it's all specified in the contract, so, and all the bidders were made aware of that. Okay, so, moving along to the zoning, um, ordinance rewrite agreement from Black Hills Council.
So I did have this in the budget, and after our comprehensive plan, our zoning ordinance correlates with that, and so that's why it was put into the budget to redo that, and Black Hills Council is who helped us with the comprehensive plan, so I felt it only made sense to go with them for the zoning ordinance, and they have done several, so that's what this is, is proposal for that that would need to be signed off on, and seventeen thousand nine, is it just seventeen thousand?
Seventeen-five.
Seventeen-five. But I would still need a motion to move forward with that, it, it will take a process like the comprehensive plan did.
And, and then, and then after, uh, they go through the zor- zoning ordinance, so we'll sync up with our comprehensive plan, and then we'll vote on it, and we'll have a valid zoning ordinance.
Right.
And that's very important.
I think we have a map too when we get that.
Yeah, the planning and zoning will be very involved, just like they were with the comprehensive plan, and you know, by the time we start this, um, it's probably gonna carry over, you know, I did put in the budget for this, but there will probably be cost to go in the twenty twenty-four budget, so it won't all be spent, so I'll have to calculate that when I work on the twenty twenty-four budget also to include portion of this cost, so just to let you know that.
But it is budgeted?
Mm-hmm.
And it was something that we talked about doing?
Yes.
And it will clean up our, and do a follow-up on the comprehensive. Okay, so, um.
I'm a little disappointed. When I read it today, it said the city hereby agrees to provide compensation to the council for seventeen-five. I thought it'll get some kind of bonus.
When I read it, that's when I. They're called the council.
Yes.
Black Hills Council, local government.
I have to go back and read it.
Me too.
Good catch, good catch. Okay, so do I have a motion to approve this performance contract with Black Hills Council of Local Governments for seventeen thousand five hundred dollars?
Yes.
Kelly's moved? Sort of. And Mike seconded, any further comments or discussions or concerns? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Okay, so tell us about this G Works new software, Carolyn.
Well, so currently we use a product from Banyan, which was in place prior to me. I was gonna try and look back when I thought that it was done, it's supported by municipal league is, I believe, the reason why we went with Banyan the first time, and I just feel they aren't keeping up with the times, and a lot of people that are, had been with Banyan are now moving over to, well, you guys probably haven't heard of it, but they reference it as Simple City or G Works. And so I did, uh, run into them last, um, October at the conference, and talked to them, and they stopped in, and I've been working with them since that time. And I, um, was going to try and go to Keystone to just kind of see how some of it works and all that. I haven't made it due to the weather. But when I went to my, uh, quarterly finance officers meeting in Hill City, middle of March, there was Hill City, Keystone, Hermosa, Newell, no, not Newell, sorry, Belphus, and someone else that was there, and they have all switched to this new software. They say it, and they had all been with Banyan, so I, I feel like that kind of speaks volumes. And, um, they are going to be, and this quote would include going to the cloud someday, this cloud kind of amazes me, I'm not quite into that, but I know everything you have on your phone can go to the cloud and stuff. Where Banyan is currently using Microsoft Access, which is not the best platform to use, they struggle with it a lot, and I understand it's going to be obsolete, obsolete in twenty twenty-four. They've not put anything out there what they're gonna move to, so it kind of scares me a little bit. And even my I T guy gets really kind of frustrated, because they aren't very helpful in customer service, and when I got into this position, I wanted some training, and they weren't willing to, they said, no, you just have to get it from whoever and just learn as you go, you know? So it's ki- been kind of frustrating, but it, I mean, it's worked. But I really feel like I would like to switch, and I did get a proposal from these guys. It is, um, twelve thousand dollars for the first time setup fee. Then annually, there will be support costs for four, um, four modules, which is fund accounting, utility, I call it point of sale through Banyan, but they call it front desk. And then, um, payroll, those are the four modules that we use with Banyan, and these guys would provide that, and they, um, the annual support for that is gonna be fifty-seven hundred. I looked at what Banyan support annually costs, and it's like uh, four thousand nine hundred, so it is gonna be a bit more, but, um, they did say that this first time, depending on when we get started with them, when we get the, the light, they will pro rate that fifty-seven hundred dollars, so if we start in June, we'd only have to pay half of that fifty-seven hundred dollars, and they are willing to take half of the one-time setup fee at that time, and then we could pay the other half next year in the twenty twenty-four budget, so we can kind of split that cost out.
Carolyn, what were the cities that you know that have adapted this and liked it?
Um, Hill City, Keystone, and Keystone, the reason I was going with them, I think Hill City does too use all four of these modules, but Keystone's closer for me to go to, um. Oh, New Anduas going with it too, but they haven't gotten all of them on board yet. And so Keystone, Hill City, Hermosa, Bellphus, and New Anduas, they haven't got all of them, but they're switching to them, and, um, Hot Springs is considering it, they're with Banyan right now too, but she's kind of like me, she said, I just know Banyan, I'm kind of afraid to switch, I said, I know, learning new things is hard, but I really feel like it's gonna be a good move, because I, I do, I really struggle with them.
It's like, it's, it sounds like the timing's right.
Yeah.
Es- especially when they're so iffy in twenty twenty-four.
Right. So I, um, would ask for approval to start moving forward with this, if you thought it, I mean, I know it sounds like a lot of money, but I did look back and what it cost us to get the meter reading set up, which it's been a good thing, I mean, I think it's been awesome, but that was seventy-one thousand dollars. So this to run utility, payroll, fund accounting, all those for this cost, I mean, this is, that's my livelihood in my office, you know, is this software, so.
And you, you've been familiar with it enough, you think it's a good move?
I'm not familiar with it at all, but except for just hearing them, but they, they'll do the training and all that, and everybody else that talked, they said it's really easy to learn. They said their annual report was easier to run it through this G Works than Banyan was, they struggled with doing annual report, which I just finished doing, but, um, so I don't know, before I, I really wanted to go see it first, but with all these people at this meeting that was talking, I'm like, I mean, it, it's gonna be a learning thing for me anyway, but when they've all switched and they were all doing Banyan, like, I just think that's.
It sounds like it's going, it's obsolete, and it's not, you said it's not keeping up with the times.
Right.
Carolyn, can, can we vote on this now?
Yeah, I would appreciate it, so we can move forward, I mean, it's gonna take a process, because I have to supply them with my fund accounting accounts, and they have to do all the setup, it, it's probably gonna take, by the time I give them the green light, a couple of months before we're ready.
And, and it sounds like they're working with us on the payments, kind of softening that, I would make a motion that we do this.
Okay, it's been moved to, moved to G Works or approved, uh, Carolyn, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any other discussion or concern? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries.
And Carolyn, you should go to Hill City and go to the other. Just saying.
Well, yeah, that's true, I should.
Just saying.
And I bet you'd like to ride along.
I would, yeah.
No, for crying.
For crying.
Okay, that brings us to the mayor's report, and the only thing I was going, well, first of all, I, um, attended the regional municipal league meeting, uh, and enjoyed, I attended that with Carolyn, that was in Hot Springs, enjoyed sitting with, uh, the mayor from Rapid City, the uh, commissioner from Pennington County, and the mayor of Edgemont, a great opportunity to learn from others. And the, the takeaway I had that night, uh, was that actually Airbnb's, is what they call it, our vacation homes contribute to the BBB funds. And, um, I wasn't aware of that before, so I was glad to learn that. So that's all I have for a mayor report tonight, so that takes us to the finance report. Carolyn, what do you want to talk to us about the audit?
I included it in your packet, so the, um, legislative audit has accepted our twenty twenty-one audit. So we're good to go there. And I'm hoping within the next month, you, he will be ready to present that to you guys, it sounds like way back then, but, and it kind of is, but a lot of other, at that meeting that I've attended at, um, Hill City, a couple other towns are kind of behind. A lot of other, at that meeting that I've attended at, um, Hill City, a couple of other towns are kind of behind. I mean, we've done our part, it's just the auditors waiting for them to get their part in, and that, so. But anyway, just wanted to let you know, I did get accepted. Um, on May twenty-ninth is when the, uh, American Legion does their memorial services here in the community center. And last year they did this rather than going up to the cemetery to do their gun salute. They did it out here in the parking lot and they said they felt they didn't lose the crowd that way. And, um, they would just like to ask to have that again if you guys are okay with it. I mean, if you, it's a consensus, they don't really need a vote of you.
Yes.
And then I did, at the last meeting, um, you approved the lease agreement for the, yeah, the lease agreement with Blooms. And I did get that paperwork back. They have sold everything, so they are not interested in that lease. So I don't know that we have an option to lease it to anyone else.
And the reason we can't lease is it's not fenced off and then the owners of that property, that grass, so there is no option.
So just wanted to update you there and also an update that we did attend that district meeting in Hot Springs. Had a really nice supper and served by, um. I believe it was the auxiliary women and had youth group that served it to us, uh.
Oh, the.
High school, yeah, team that served. So it was really nice, very well done. And I did include the legislative update that was shared at that meeting in your packet that you can read through. And if you have any questions about it, you can reach out to me, but I'll let you read that on your own time. Um, I have put an ad in the paper for the lifeguards, um, we have. Four. Ava, Nora, Nelson. Oh, three, sorry, yeah. I've not heard back from a couple of us that I did reach out to, so. We definitely will need more lifeguards and I'll just bring back more information when I get that, but I just wanted to let you know that. So if you know of anybody, we can encourage them to submit an application. We'll get a nice tan this summer. And then, um, have been getting email notifications that the HR and finance officers training, which will be held in Pier this year, June sixth through the ninth. Um, registration is open and so I would like to register for that. And then the registration fee will be on next month's bill list. If I can get approval for it.
Do we have a consensus for her to, uh, attend that H- HR and Apple training in here?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
And, oh, um, I didn't put it on there, but another thing that we did have in the budget. And that was since we were updating the zoning ordinance, I had checked with, um, Munich Code or Civic Plus, who's kind of the new name for them. Who currently does our codification of our ordinances and puts them online for us. To go through them and review them all because they've been kind of amended so many times and. They just need some cleanup because we have old language in there, like talking about the police department, which we don't have, you know, things like that. I had that quote from them and I reached back out to make sure that that quote was still good because I'd gotten it last. June, I think, um, just before the budget. And then I decided to reach out to American Legal, which is another group and they're supported and marketed by the South Dakota Municipal League. And I do know one guy that, um. Is a rep for that. So I did reach out to him and he gave me a quote today too, and the prices are quite different. So, um, this is quite a bit cheaper. It was, it was just unreal. So I am going to need, need to do a little more research on that, why there would be such a difference in price. But it had, it was included in the budget. You guys had approved that one.
Who was the other company?
It's called American Legal.
American Legal and then, uh, what, what was the other one?
Well, Munich Code or you might know of it as Civic Plus.
Okay.
Civic Plus, I believe. So I did put a note out on the list serve to see who used what, which company. I haven't gotten a lot of response back, but when this Ross, who is with the American Legal, sent me his quote. And I didn't have time to read through it, just seeing the bottom dollar was so different. Um, he listed all the South Dakota municipalities that use them and like Rapid City and Sioux Falls. Like, geez, there are big cities and if they use them, you know, what am I missing here? Especially the, I'm just going to throw out that he gave me a quote of like seven thousand dollars to do that. And Munich Code's quote was like thirty thousand and I'm like, wow, something's way different. I researched this a little bit more to see why the dollar is so different. So I will bring more information back on that, but.
Okay. All right, anything else? Good job. Garrett, what have you been up to lately?
Um, just. The Dune City guys, but. Um, moving snow, it was pretty much consumed us, so.
Has there been a meeting where you haven't said moving snow?
I don't think I said it last time.
Okay, just asking.
Smoke in my after, I mean.
Yeah. No, I just, I don't have a lot. So where are you guys hauling now? Are you still hauling over at the, by the rodeo grounds?
No, we're pulling over there. Everything's too soaked and wet. Yeah, we're been going over the hill and a little bit back over here. It's kind of a bad deal. I, we don't have any. I don't know what we're going to do with all of this. Back here, but we got everything that's in the streets or blocking, you know, the view of something clean up.
Who's they should take care of some of it for you?
Hopefully, yeah. Yeah, no, it usually melts, usually melts pretty fast if you, you know, break it up and, yeah. Other than that, I don't.
What about the airport? Did they start on Monday?
Um, they did a little bit. They put in a, in a bigger approach. Um, that's about it. Went out and showed them all the electrical stuffs to get going there.
Okay, so.
It'll probably be, it is muddy. I just spent two hours trying to help the new plant guys get stuck out at the roll site.
You got them out though, right? They're not still there.
Eight chains.
Okay. Okay.
Hopefully it started by me.
So I had to file a NOTAM for the airport project that it, airports closed for the summer, you know? And I struggled filing NOTAMs because I do not talk airport or, you know, pilot language and stuff and all this. Yeah, it really is, but they're very good and they, when I submit it, they give me a call. No, this is how you should have done it. Okay, I'm good with that. I got it right this time. Close, the button close. That's just pretty simple. Somebody called, thought it was closed due to the weather and I'm like, well, it is, but it's still going to be closed the rest of the summer due to construction. Oh, okay.
Now was that everything out there is going to be closed, period?
They said that the, um, Lifelight could still use the apron. Am I saying that right? Apron to.
Or the guards, because they, they landed the same smell.
Yeah, and I, I didn't, I don't know who to contact for the guards, but I did call Lifelight to let them know that, um, you know. There was construction, but they could still use the.
Where, where's Preston getting along?
Well, that's what he was going to come and talk to us a little bit about. He's actually set up over in, in Pier. It's, I mean, Philip and Sturgis.
So he tried to kind of explain what he was gonna, well, the one is pretty simple, just a renewal of his conditional use permit for his storage unit out there. And parking an RV, but he tried to explain that airport crosswind runway, he wants to try to use it, but there's going to have to be. Some work done on the one end and I said, you know, I bet you can explain it better at the next meeting than I can.
But he's going to do it. He's not asking us to do it.
No, it's all, it would be all. Yeah, just needs approval. And he also said he was still waiting from the FAA on something he'd submitted and needs to hear back from them. So it's probably okay that he wasn't able to attend anything, so.
But yeah, it's a huge, um, commitment from him to, to move his business to other places to accommodate this. But it, but he really believes that it's a, he's going to be a huge improvement, so he's totally behind it, okay? So, okay? And Garrett, to you and your crew, thank you so much for all the overtime you guys have put in and the four o'clock mornings. And, uh, you've just done a terrific job and get hit with more of these snowstorms or were full of trucks. Just amazing. So thank you very much. Thank you. I have a question. Did I read that the Badlands National Park is not going to have fire? This year? Where did I read?
Oh, the, that they won't have, uh, yeah, like a fire department?
Yeah.
Yeah. Mike, uh, Carl Bob's retiring. And so. So they can't hear that, so. Interiors got lots of trucks.
Do you have certain streets you, you go move snow wet four in the morning?
In front of my house. No, we usually, usually we start on main streets are first and then fifth and sixth. We clear off and then we go to Glen and fourth.
I'm just worried about that backup beeper you have on there at four o'clock in the morning.
Jerry said he really wanted you to do his street first.
I'd like go over to Darwin Geigl's house personally.
Where I usually go.
Do you have special streets?
Oh, yeah. Darwin Geigl, John Kinderman. You could bang the bucket of the loader for every kind of that, so. Lori doesn't like it.
And fire truck, have we got one of those coming soon?
Um, sounds like it might be here Tuesday or Wednesday next week.
Hey.
And the other truck that we got from, um. The BLM is getting some work done to it and it should be done soon, so.
Okay.
What vehicle were you using to clean gutter, or, yeah, gutter bands?
Um, well, the green one, yeah, that's the one that we bought several years ago. And we went around and got all the dirt and stuff off them.
It really flows down Southover a lot better.
Yeah.
Since you did that, so.
So thank you to you and your crew. Okay, anything else?
Nope.
Do we have any items for discussion tonight? No action will be taken? Okay, the next council meeting will be, um, April twentieth at six thirty. Um, I have no reason to have an executive session. Does anyone else? I don't care if you want one, Rick, we're not going to.
Good, good.
Okay, is that okay with you, Stan?
I got that, that's great.
Okay, is there any other other?
Oh, what? Did my phone die? We can't frame on my phone.
Hello? Hello? Yes, I can hear you. Okay, okay, we're with you on that. Is there any other other? All right, meetings adjourned. Thank you for being here this evening. Okay, well, that's lucky.